Good evening and welcome to this session of the Thousand Oaks City Council for Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember Angler.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Taylor.
Here.
And Mayor Newman.
Here. September 11th, 2001 will be a day forever remembered both for its tragedy and for the unwavering spirit of the American people. As our nation was violently attacked by terrorists, heroes among us emerged. Among those who showed true courage and sacrifice with New York Fire and Police Departments, their response to the tragedy reminded us all of the importance of our first responders and their commitment to protecting us. On this, the 24th anniversary of the attacks, as a tribute to these brave men and women, we are proud to introduce our community's Fire and Police Honor Guard. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm sure we are all grateful to our Honor Guards, Fire and Police, and I'm sure all of us will never forget the memory of 9/11 and the lessons it taught us. We move now to our special presentation for this evening, and for that, I'll walk over to the podium. As our community knows, Thousand Oaks is vulnerable to extreme weather events such as wildfires, earthquake, and heavy rainfall. In September, we recognize National Preparedness Month. All city staff operate as designated disaster service workers, and our public work staff has been designated as first responders during an emergency. They work tirelessly to maintain our critical infrastructure such as storm drains, traffic signals, water reservoirs, and wastewater collection even in emergencies. But of course, we are not doing this alone. We are fortunate to live in an area where regional coordination is the standard. We partner closely with the County of Ventura, other governmental agencies, and nonprofit organizations across the county. We are fortunate to have Patrick Maynard, Director of Ventura County's Office of Emergency Services, with us today to speak briefly about the great work they do for emergency preparedness and emergency response as we recognize National Preparedness Month and to accept this proclamation for their ongoing support for our residents. Patrick, would you like to join us here?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Powers. Again, for the record, my name is Patrick Maynard. I'm the Director of Emergency Services for the Sheriff's Office. First and foremost, thanks for recognizing September as National Preparedness Month. It means a lot to us. It's obviously what we do day in and day out, so it's great to bring notoriety to this. As the mayor mentioned, disasters are no uncommon thing here in Ventura County. We deal with them a lot. Something I would be remiss, though, if I didn't point out is that we're seeing more and more of them, more and more of those that are smaller in nature, that impact our communities in a big way but don't necessarily trigger some of those vital state and federal support services that we come to expect, namely CALOES and FEMA. I say all that to say it's important that we all do our part to work together to plan, to prepare for these incidents. It's not a matter of if they will happen, it's a matter of when, right? That responsibility to do those things is a shared responsibility. My team is small but mighty, but there's a lot of Ventura County residents, so it really takes all of us working together. Preparedness on three levels. On an individual level, we need to prepare our families, prepare our homes, making a kit, having a plan, staying informed. For our businesses, that's planning to ensure that you can continue to do business even post-disaster. Much of our community relies upon the service that you provide, so we need our businesses to do their part. And then lastly, at the local government level, it's important that we all, whether you're city, county, state, federal, that we all do our part to train our staff, to invest in the tools and the equipment that we need to respond and care for the community. Again, that's really what this is about. It's a whole-community approach. It's all of us doing our part to get through this. Lastly, I just would like to share with everyone, we have a couple of great resources for preparedness information. Anything you want to know about disasters in Ventura County can be found on our Preparedness website, readyventuracounty.org. And of course, we would encourage you all to sign up for VC Alert. You can do that at vcalert.org. With that, thank you for the opportunity. We certainly appreciate it and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Patrick, very much. Great, great words. We appreciate all you do, all the great resources you provide. We can't do enough. As you said, this is a when, not if proposition, and we're glad that we have readiness in the forefront through your office. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So we have some hardware for you in recognition of National Preparedness Month, and at this time, I'd like to invite you and staff to come join the council for a photo.
Fantastic. These are for you.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. And we have some hardware as well, some challenge coins. So we go now to public comments. If my count is correct, we have five speakers here in chambers and one speaker remotely. So the way this will work is each speaker, we will have three minutes apiece. We ask that you state your name and city of residence, and I'll call the three speakers who are on deck, as it were. So I'll ask that the next two speakers who are up make your way to the chairs here, right behind the podium, so that we'll be ready to go. So our first three speakers in house are Kenneth Yaz, Francesca Girard, and Brian Schumacher. Mr. Yaz, the floor is yours. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you, city councilors? Last time I was here, I mentioned that Senior Deputy Nikki Fonte-Patack was the best person to get someone on the waiting list for the Navigation Center I was speaking of, the Thrive-Grove Navigation Center at that time. In general, the agencies in question, the Harbor House, Many Mansions, and the 211 phone line are doing a much better job of coordinating their message. They weren't doing that at first. However, challenges remain since this is largely an online process or by phone and eventually and inevitably in person. Monica, who volunteers at Harbor House, told me that an interested party must schedule an in-person visit, go through an interview, be entered into the Homeless Management Information System database, and then assigned a case manager. This is initially a face-to-face exercise, beginning with a phone call. If someone just shows up at Harbor House unannounced, they will be turned away. So how can the City of Thousand Oaks, law enforcement, and the nonprofits best serve the local homeless population? Let's start with something obvious: cell phone. Cell phones can be a lifeline to unhoused people, to be able to access and get feedback on critical services, remain up to date on current events, and eventually find upward mobility. While 50% of the homeless in Thousand Oaks and elsewhere may have smartphones, according to some studies, they are frequently lost, stolen, broken out of juice, or suspended because of non-payment, and the other 50% don't have them at all. Why not have Thousand Oaks launch a program to get a smartphone new or recycled into the hands of every homeless person who demonstrates a need for one and is qualified? Why not reconvene the ad hoc homelessness committee from years ago to come up with a pilot program? Yes, the federal government has such a program called Lifeline, but to be eligible, you have to be part of SNAP, or Medicaid, or SSI, or one of the few others. Ours would be direct to the end user with not a lot of red tape. This would be one of the most meaningful and practical actions the city could take. Second Thousand Oaks could appoint an advocate to become the single point of contact for the homeless who reach out to the city for help. This appointee could work with the libraries on their outreach to the homeless, spend time with the vulnerable population deputies, keep the homeless webpage up to date, the list goes on. In the City of Thousand Oaks financial year 2025-2026, top 10 priorities, the city listed homelessness as its number-one priority. Thousand Oaks has the resources and a commitment to the homeless citizens. What I'm suggesting would make Thousand Oaks a pace setter and a model nationwide for how this social emergency can and should be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Francesca Girard, and I apologize if I'm butchering your name, then Brian Schumacher and David Feldman. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city councilmembers. My name is Francesca Girard, and I'm representing my father, Klaus Stoba, who has been residing at 816 Rimcrest Drive in Westlake Village for 35 years. I'm speaking here to ask you to please remain at the City of Thousand Oaks and not to become the City of hundreds of oaks. In July of '24, my father's neighbor, Ms. Jamali, who resides at 818 Rimcrest, hired someone to cut an eight-inch and 10-inch limb off of my dad's very old oak tree. My dad has at least three oak trees with overhang onto her property, as you can see from the first page on the 2005 site plan. Ms. Jamali had applied for a permit to cut the limbs but was denied because she had no arborist report. Despite the city's rejection, weeks later, Ms. Jamali pruned my dad's tree. The way that this was pruned was so damaging that it now makes it susceptible to disease. Please see photo 1 to see the healthy oak tree canopy, and then look at photos 2 and 3 to see Ms. Jamali's pruning. Weeks later, in September of '24, Ms. Jamali's crew graded the hillside with heavy machinery without a permit underneath my dad's oak trees, as seen in photo 4. Since September, this heavy machinery has trampled upon the roots of my dad's and Ms. Jamali's trees multiple times. I cannot emphasize the damage that is done to an oak tree when grading displaces the roots in the soil and causes the roots to lose its connection to the trunk. When Ms. Jamali resubmitted her pool application in June of this year, she neglected to identify the protected tree zones accurately, as you can see on her permit on page 5. She mislabeled the protective tree zones to be only 15 feet. This is a material difference that should not be overlooked. This is a material difference that should not be overlooked. Together with other neighbors, we are in utter shock that her pool permit was approved on July 3rd. Not once did Ms. Jamali have a valid tree permit before she performed work in the protective tree areas of more than half a dozen trees. Yet, in February of this year, again in April, and then again in August of this year, the city granted retroactive tree permits for the 818 property. I ask you why Ms. Jamali seems to have immunity to the tree ordinance. A very important part of the tree ordinance is the requirement that fencing be placed on the site to protect the tree, but the protective tree fencing was never implemented for my dad's trees nor hers. Even this morning, Ms. Jamali was using heavy machinery at an oak tree, which is expressly forbidden in the August tree permit. Only manual labor is allowed. Looking at photo number five, I ask you, is that bulldozer a hand tool? The city can be setting a very dangerous precedent for developers to damage trees with minimal or no consequences. How will the nature, natural character of the Cano Valley be preserved? And although the rock removal seems almost done at the site, I do invite each one of you to see the site and to verify that what I'm saying is true with your own eyes. My contact information is contained within there, and I would request a written response from the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brian Schumacher, followed by David Feldman, and then Ronald Arrejo. Good evening.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening. My name is Brian Schumacher. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Autism Society of Ventura County, and I am Advocacy and Community Impact Manager for ASBC. On behalf of our advocacy committee, I want to order, offer our strong support of your proclamation declaring September National Emergency Preparedness Month. Thank you for recognizing the importance of readiness and protecting our community. Emergency preparedness is especially vital for individuals with disabilities and their families. Emergencies and disasters often disproportionately affect those with unique needs, leaving them vulnerable without proper planning and resources. As part of our commitment to empowering individuals with autism and other disabilities, we are proud to offer free emergency preparedness workshops tailored to the needs of individuals and their families and caregivers, as well as organizations serving those with disabilities. These workshops will focus on creating personalized emergency plans, assembling go-bags, and developing tools for self-advocacy during a disaster. Attendees will also receive a free sensory kit and go-bag to help them prepare. We invite you and the residents of Thousand Oaks to attend the following workshops in your area. The first, Emergency Preparedness for People with Disabilities, Their Families and Caregivers, will be on September 17th at 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Canaho Elementary's multipurpose room here in Thousand Oaks. And next, we'll hold Emergency Planning for Organizations Serving Disabilities on October 17th from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Thousand Oaks Library and their community room. We hope you will join us and help spread the word about these vital resources. We know that together, we can ensure that all in our community are equipped to handle emergencies with confidence, dignity, and resilience. Please register on our website at autismventura.org, or via the flyer that I've shared with you today. We have also shared copies in the foyer if people are interested. You can also email me for more information at advocacy@autismventura.org. Thank you for your support and for recognizing the importance of National Emergency Preparedness Month.
Thank you, Mr. Schumacher. Next up is David Feldman, followed by Ronald Arrejo. Mr. Feldman, long time.
Hey, how are you?
Good to see you.
Thank you. Mayor Newman, council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is David Feldman, and I'm a lifelong resident of Thousand Oaks. After graduating from college years ago, I chose to return here for the same reasons I believe many of us call the city home: the quality of life, the open space, the convenience, and above all, the sense of safety. It's where I met my wife, who's a lifelong resident, where we bought a home, built our careers, and most recently became new parents. I grew up as a summer lifeguard for the Cano Parks and Rec. I was a drum major of Thousand Oaks High School marching band, and years earlier, I even painted one of the tiles on the walkway outside the Civic Arts Plaza, just as my wife did. Later in life, I founded a nonprofit cycling team and helped scale several successful local companies based in the community. I share this because I'm proud to be both a resident and a product of this city. That pride also makes me feel responsible for protecting its character, most importantly, the safety of the people who live and visit here. The reason I'm standing here tonight is because of my growing concern over the sharp increase in drivers running red lights throughout the city. What was once a rare occasion is now routine, and that shift should alarm all of us. Roughly 18 months ago, I began noticing a shift. Drivers weren't just pushing through yellows, they were blatantly running red lights. What started as an occasional shock quickly became so common that my wife and I could predict it at nearly every intersection. Having lived here our whole lives, my wife and I can both tell you, this is not normal for the City of Thousand Oaks. That sense of unease turned to serious, sorry, turned serious when we ourselves nearly collided during a protective left turn at Moore Park and Hillcrest. The day I decided I would probably have to act and be here tonight was about a year ago. Driving up Hillcrest from the Oaks Mall, I witnessed people running red lights at eight consecutive intersections between Moore Park and Westlake Boulevard. If you're asking yourselves now, how many lights are there between Moore Park and Westlake Boulevard? There are about a dozen. Since then, the pattern has only worsened. On two separate occasions, I saw drivers blatantly running red lights next to Thousand Oaks Sheriff's vehicles. In both cases, the deputies watched it happen but did not act. I understand the realities of departmental priorities and budgets, but what message does it send when violations go unchecked? It tells the community that running red lights has no consequences, and drivers are acting accordingly. Just last month, I even saw a Thousand Oaks transit bus run a red light. When city vehicles themselves disregard traffic laws, it becomes even more serious. For me, this became real seven weeks ago. My wife and I had just left Los Angeles Hospital with our two-day-old baby boy when we were nearly struck at the corner of Moore Park and Chance. And then, two weeks ago, while turning left from Valley Spring on Westlake Boulevard, a G-Wagon sped through a red light as we were mid-turn with my wife and baby in the car. It was only quick reflexes that avoided tragedy. I stand before you today. In all my years, I have never felt more at risk of living in the City of Thousand Oaks than I do now. Not crime, not natural disasters, not even biking on our roads compares to the danger of drivers treating red lights as optional.
Mr. Feldman, I'm sorry, your time is up. But thank you for coming to speak. And our next in-person speaker is Ronald, is it Arrejo?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Newman, Mayor Protem Taylor, council members, staff, and public. My name is Ronald Arrejo from Oxnard, and I'm speaking as one of the board members of the Filipino-American Council of Ventura County, inviting you and all residents to the Filipino-American Fiesta to be held at the Ventura County Museum next month on Sunday, October 19. Since its inception in 1987, the council has played a pivotal role in fostering communication among member organizations, serving as a central hub for coordination and representation. Committed to promoting harmony and understanding within the Filipino-American community in Ventura County, the council is dedicated to encouraging active participation in various spheres of community life, including civic, economic, cultural, social, and charitable programs. The council is the umbrella organization for 13 Filipino-American clubs, championing the engagement of member organizations aimed at enhancing the general well-being of the Filipino-American community, thereby ensuring its continued growth and prosperity, and serving as a cornerstone of Filipino-American identity and representation in Ventura County. The Filipino-American Fiesta is a free event to celebrate culture and community. It will be a vibrant afternoon filled with inspiring speakers, traditional Filipino dance performances, and delicious snacks. Discover the rich history and diverse stories of Filipino-Americans through music, art, and conversation. In honor of Filipino-American History Month in October, this is the first time that the Museum of Ventura County will host this event to bring the history of the past for us to learn in the present and to act positively in the future. The Filipino-American Council of Ventura County invites you to learn more at the Filipino-American Fiesta on Sunday, October 19, at the Ventura County Museum. I'll leave a few handouts with the city clerk. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for letting us know. Appreciate it. We have one remote speaker this evening, and that's Ms. Kinzie Flame.
Can you hear me?
Can hear you just fine. You're good.
I'm picking up from soccer practice. Good evening, council members. First, let me say, I love seeing so many of our teens out riding around town on their bikes. It's freedom, it's independent, it's a good alternative to being glued to a phone. But here's the problem: so many of them are riding unsafely. We've seen kids doing wheelies down Moore Park Road, weaving in between cars, and even riding on the 23 freeway. And let me tell you, playing chicken with a 13-year-old on an e-bike, no helmet, during school pickup, that's no game an adult wants to play or win. Now, I know there are safe riders out there, plenty of kids who follow the rules, wear helmets, and ride responsibly. I want to acknowledge them too. But my fear, and I think many parents here would agree, is that we're only one bad day away from attending a teenager's funeral, and I don't want to stand here after something happens and say, "We should have done something." So, here's my ask: let's start reinforcing the e-bike laws we already have. Ticket the jaywalkers around our schools. Ticket the kids with no helmets. Impound the illegal bikes being ridden by minors. Even give parents or two a ticket directly in front of the school drop-off line. It won't take many for, it won't take many for the word to spread. Sometimes, for lack of a better phrase, we all need to be taught a lesson. With the loss of the crossing guards at many schools, enforcing road safety for our kids on e-bikes and scooters is even more critical than before. We've already seen several accidents involving students in the community, and the school year has barely begun. I can only speak for myself, but I'm pretty sure most of the Cano Valley moms and dads would agree. It would only take a few well-placed tickets before we all get it together. Let's keep our kids safe, and let's not wait until tragedy forces the point. Thanks for listening, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Flame. For any responses or comments, we go to our city manager, Mr. Powers.
Thanks, Mayor Newman. Handful items this evening. As it relates to the, the neighbor dispute and potential code issue up on Remrock, I'm going to have Community Development Director Kelvin Parker catch our speaker out in the lobby, if you want to go ahead and step down, Kelvin. Regarding the red lights, traffic safety, I was going to ask Chief Paris, who wouldn't mind catching, catching our speaker for a quick conversation, to talk a little bit more about that issue as well. Appreciate the comments on e-bike enforcement, area of focus for our police department. In fact, we did a number of sting operations this summer, some of which did result in impounding of e-bikes. There's a wide range of bikes out there, there's a wide range of rules associated with those bikes, so that is an area of continued focus as we move into the fall. So, that was well, well-placed comments from the speaker. And then regarding homelessness, you know, with, we're a handful of months in at Thrive Grove, things are going very well. Working a lot on smoothing out all the communications between all the various entities. We have new nonprofits that are running that, 211, bringing them up to speed, working with our law enforcement. Melissa Hurtilo has been running point for us out of our Community and Cultural Services Department, and, you know, the city council maintains their focus and commitment on homelessness. Just a reminder for the community at large, the City of Thousand Oaks put in $8 million, over $8 million into that particular project. That's it.
Very good. Thank you. Next up is our consent calendar. Are there any questions or items to poll? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Angler.
Move the consent calendar.
Will the clerk please prepare us for a vote?
That motion passes 5 to 0, and I have an ordinance titled to read. An ordinance amending Thousand Oaks Municipal Code relating to regulation of urban lot splits and two-unit housing developments, SB 9 Units, by updating Title IX, Chapter 4, Article 37, Sections 9-4.3703 through 9-4.3708 to implement adopted state law, MCA 2023-70010, Ordinance Number 1739-N-S.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing on community development block grants, and presenting this evening is Community Development Analyst Lynn Oshida, and available for questions are Planning Division Manager Kristin Rice, and eventually, busy right now, Community Development Director Kelvin Parker. Ms. Oshida, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to actually interrupt, and I'll open this public hearing. So, hearing advertised as required by law is open to Consider Agenda Item 10A. As you mentioned, the Community Development Block Grant Program, 2024-25 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. There are no speakers for this item.
Thank you. Ms. Oshida, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development requires an annual public review of the city's Community Development Block Grant Program. This year was from July 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2025. The caper was posted on the city's website at City Hall for 15 days for public review. We request city council approval to submit the caper to HUD. Last year, about $654,000 was available, which included prior-year funding and the 2024 CDBG grant. The CDBG funds were allocated to three areas, including the 2024 Community Projects, Public Services, and Administration. The city expended about $570,000, with an ending balance of about $84,000. Beneficiaries of the federal funds were low-mod income Thousand Oaks residents at or below 80% of area median income. The city's primary CDBG activity last year was housing rehabilitation. The Many Mansions Capital Improvement Project at Bella Vista installed security cameras throughout the complex. The gazebo and lighting project will be complete by December 2025. The project supports 71 affordable units and one manager's unit. The mobile home rehabilitation activities with SAFE and Habitat for Humanity, Rehab 20, owner-occupied low-moderate-income units, and expended about $250,000. Both agencies completed their program, and about $16,000 of unspent funds are available for allocation. The SAFE program was focused on coaches owned by seniors needing HVACs, water heaters, roofs, and window replacements, while the Habitat program involved volunteer labor with painting, stairs, ramps, and deck repairs, grab bars, and walk-in showers installations, and window replacements. While city council approved five public service programs, one program declined the grant, and city manager reallocated the $15,000 through a minor amendment last year to the remaining four public service agencies. The program expanded $91,000 in CDBG funds and served over 700 low-mod income Thousand Oaks residents. The administrative cost of $108,000 included staffing, public notices, overhead costs, the fair housing contract with the County of Ventura. Last year, CDBG also paid for the county's consultant to prepare the five-year Regional Consolidated Plan and other HUD documents. The table summary shows the city expended about $570,000 in CDBG funds, with an ending balance of $84,000. The June balance includes one open project, which is expected to spend its remaining funds by December. This past April, city council reallocated $15,000. And lastly, city staff will review the status of the current CDBG activities, and if appropriate, will ask city manager to approve a minor amendment to reallocate the $16,000. The goals, the goal is to have all CDBG funds spent before June 2026 for the next caper. Tonight, we ask city council to approve the caper for Sumail to HUD, and find the caper is not a project as defined under CEQA. This concludes the report, and staff is available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any council questions of staff? Councilmember Angler.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. We do have an $84,000 carryover, is that correct? With one, with one pro- With, with one, with one project still to be completed out of that? Is that the way I read it?
So the one Many Mansions project is still open, and that's $52,000. So the majority of that is with Many Mansions right now. The other $15,000 this past April, City Council had reallocated that to our current projects this year. And then what's available is about $16,000.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
I, I'd had to have two questions. One, one is a follow-up on Councilmember Angler's question. Is the expectation that, that that $52,000 and change that many, for the Many Mansions project, is the expectation that that will be expended in the next year?
Yes, they should be done by December.
Very good. And then finally, this is somewhat going into opinion territory, but I'm, I'm really just looking for a characterization here. Would, would you agree that community development block grants are essential toward providing housing and services, housing services, for those who need, or most in need of housing in our community?
Yes, so the funds do support housing rehabilitation and the different public services.
Very good. Thank you very much for the report. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. We have no public speakers, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up to council discussion or a motion. Councilmember Adam.
Yeah, thank you. Glad to see there's emphasis again on mobile homes in the city of Thousand Oaks. Mobile homes represent a true bastion of affordable housing here in the city, and vital that we keep them viable and maintained. I like that. I, I don't have any more discussion than that, but I will move 10A with Staff Recommendations 1 and 2.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any, any other discussion, comments?
Just, just to tag along with my colleague. It's much easier for people to remain in a home than it is for us to find new home for them if it becomes in disrepair. The way we're using these CDBG funds to keep people in existing housing and making sure that it's up to standard is a good use of our funds. And as the report indicated, 700 low-income folks in our, in our city were assisted this year by our, our efforts. So well, well worth the effort and well worth the money.
Yeah, couldn't agree more. I mean, these are, these CDBG funds and the city's good administration of them are absolutely essential toward keeping, keeping folks with a roof over their heads. So thank you. And with that, let's vote, please.
Councilmember Adam, can I have your voice vote, please? Thank you, and Mayor Newman.
Yes, for a verbal vote.
Thank you.
I'm in the same boat as, as my colleague, I.
Thank you very much, and that motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. Is there anything to read on that, Adam Clark? Very good. We go to next to department reports. And this is our, I think, biennial Waste and Wastewater Financial Plans and Proposed Rate Adjustment Report. And presenting this evening, happy to welcome up to the podium, is Budget Officer Tara Tesado. And available for questions is Finance Director Jamie Boscarino, and Public Works Director Nader Hadari. Ms. Tesado, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Newman and members of the council. I am Tara Tesado, Budget Officer in the Finance Department. Joining me tonight is our Finance Director Jamie and our Public Works Director Nader. Additionally, Sanjay Ghar, President of Water Resource Economics, the consultant who assisted the city's staff by preparing tonight's financial plan and rate study. So tonight, for your consideration and approval, are both the Water Financial Plan and Wastewater Rate Study, a request to set up a public hearing in November, and two years of proposed rate adjustments, which would go into effect for water in January 2026 and '27, and for wastewater in July '26 and '27. Tonight, we will first go over the water recommendations, then wastewater. Then I'll provide an update on the Utility Assistance Program, and then go over the Prop 218 timeline. Are utilities at a glance? The city is one of four water purveyors and one of two wastewater purveyors serving residents and businesses in the Conejo Valley. The city-operated utilities are public enterprises managed by the Public Works Department with utility billing and customer service managed by the Finance Department. The city serves approximately 17,000 water customers. In Thousand Oaks, nearly all of our drinking water is imported as we don't have an abundant local groundwater supply. And our imported water originates in Northern California through the State Water Project, is treated by the Metropolitan Water District, and then conveyed through Cuyahoga Municipal Water District. That's why our costs are more sensitive to the wholesale water increases compared to neighboring cities who have local supplies, such as groundwater. The city's wastewater utility serves 38,000 wastewater customers, over 100,000 residents, through 415 miles of sewer pipes and treats about 8 million gallons of water at the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant, a facility that meets strict state and federal standards. Costs to operate and maintain these systems continue to rise. We have major capital investments planned to keep our critical infrastructure working in good condition for the community. Over $85 million in wastewater projects alone in the next five years, plus another $74 million in water. In general, financial studies are done biannally with a five-year planning horizon. We only adopt two years of rates at a time that we, we can remain flexible to the continuing needs of these services. These ensure our costs are being recovered by rates and no more. Cost-to-service studies are legally required every 10 years, but Thousand Oaks schedules them every six. Cost-to-services ensures each customer class is paying their equitable share of their actual use of the wastewater system. Let's start with the water utility. The updated Water Financial Plan gives us four main recommendations. First, we would adjust our reserve policy, lowering the capital reserve from two years down to one year of average project costs. This is in line with the common practice for other agencies and helps ease pressure on customer bills. Second, we'll need to adjust overall water revenues by about 5% per year. This provides steady funding for operations, ongoing maintenance, and replacement of aging infrastructure. Third, we will continue with the wholesale water pass-through. Since all of our water is imported, this mechanism allows for direct recovery of those costs. And finally, we're recommending the adoption of drought rates. This is an optional tool that council can choose to activate during a declared drought to provide a safeguard for the utility to stay financially stable if water sales drop significantly. The financial plan update considered a variety of factors that affect utility rates. One of those factors is the city's water reserve policy, which sets target levels for the water enterprise. This policy ensures that we have adequate cash flow to cover daily operations and maintenance, respond to emergencies, and fund future capital improvement projects. Altogether, the total reserve target is about $25.3 million. As part of this update, we reduce the capital reserve requirement from two years to one year of average capital spending. This change helps ease rate pressure for customers while continuing to meet best practices commonly used across the industry. The city's currently adopted Water Capital Improvement Program totals about $74.5 million over the next five years. The '25-'26 fiscal year shown here includes carryover funding from prior years, which is why the first year is the largest on the chart. The water program focuses on improving reliability and resiliency across the system. Investments include replacement of aging water mains, rehabilitation of reservoirs and pump station upgrades, and the expansion of the system monitoring and backup power. One of the largest initiatives is the Automated Metering Infrastructure Project, which will improve billing accuracy, leak detection, and customer service. Other key efforts include distribution system improvements and emergency supply reliability projects. Importantly, the financial plan funds this work without new debt. The proposed 5% annual revenue adjustment and continuation of the wholesale pass-through provide the stability to complete these investments while keeping rates regionally competitive. The first chart shows the proposed meter base rates. These are the fixed monthly charges based on meter size. For most single-family homes with a 3/4-inch meter, the base charge moves from $28.41 today to $29.84 in 2026, and then to $31.34 in 2027. Larger meters increase proportionally. The next chart shows the proposed single-family residential commodity rates. These are the per-unit charges for water use. The rates are tiered to encourage conservation. The first 12 units are billed at a lower rate. Higher usage falls into tier two, and very high usage falls into tier three. In 2026, the first tier moves from $6.41 to $7.16, and by 2027, it is $8.10. The last chart shows the proposed Uniform Commodity Rates for multifamily, commercial, irrigation, and other non-residential customers. These customers pay a flat rate per unit of water, moving from $6.78 today to $7.54 in 2026, and $8.50 in 2027. Construction water follows a similar adjustment. Together, these rates ensure the system remains financially stable, align costs fairly across the customer classes, and continue to encourage efficient water use. So let's look at the pass-through cost. The pass-through adjustment is separate from the city's base and commodity rates. This charge recovers wholesale water cost increases from Metropolitan Water District and Cuyahoga, which supply 100% of our water. In January 2026, the pass-through is projected at 42 cents per unit of water, and in 2027, it increases by another 60 cents per unit. The charge applies evenly across all customer classes and usage tiers. This approach ensures that the city can recover wholesale costs directly, as required by state law, without overcharging or undercharging our customers. Here are the proposed pumping lift charges, which are applied per 100 cubic feet of water consumed. These charges are a cost-recovery mechanism for customers who live at higher elevations. Water has to be pumped uphill in some parts of the city, and that requires additional electricity. The pumping lift charge ensures that the customers who directly benefit from the extra pumping pay for the additional energy costs, rather than spreading them across all ratepayers. This chart shows the estimated monthly water bills in 2026 for the three types of single-family households: low, medium, and high water use. The blue bars represent current 2025 bills, and the green bars represent the proposed 2026 bills. For a low-use household at about 10 units of water per month, the monthly bill would go from $92.51 to about $101.44, an increase of $8.93, or about 9.7%. For a medium-use household at about 15 units per month, the bill would increase about 10.1%. And for high use, at about 40 units a month, the bill would be, would increase 10.6%. Overall, this reflects the combination of the base revenue adjustment and the wholesale pass-through. This chart compares Thousand Oaks' single-family residential water bills to other nearby agencies, based on a typical household using 15 units of water per month. The green portion of each bill shows the fixed monthly charge, and the blue portion represents the volumetric charge for actual water use. The red dash line marks the regional average. The comparison here reflects the 2025 rates for other agencies, not their 2026 rate. In 2025, Thousand Oaks is slightly above the regional average with a typical bill of about $126.36. With the proposed adjustment in 2026, that bill would increase to $139.13. Rates in Thousand Oaks are among the higher in the region, primarily because the city relies on 100% imported water. This resilience, reliance drives volumetric charges upward since imported water is significantly more expensive than local groundwater or recycled supply. An important distinction is that Thousand Oaks has budgeted capital projects for fire resiliency improvements to reservoirs and pump stations, an investment that other agencies are not making to the extent that we are. These projects strengthen the system reliability and safeguard our critical infrastructure. Drought rates. As part of this financial plan, we are proposing the adoption of drought rates for the first time in Thousand Oaks. The reason is simple. During droughts, when conservation is required, customers reduce their water use. While it's necessary for supply reliability, it also reduces our water sales and therefore our revenues. The challenge is that most of our costs don't go down. We still need to pay staff, operate pumps, treat water, and maintain pipelines. Without a safeguard, those revenue losses can jeopardize our ability to keep the system stable. Drought rates are designed to protect against this. They provide a temporary revenue backstop during droughts, ensuring the city can continue to operate safely without deferring critical maintenance or service. Here's how the drought rates would work. They take the form of an additional temporary surcharge on the per-unit water charge. The amount is carefully calculated to cover the revenue shortfall we'd see if the customer water use drops during a declared drought. This is important to ensure that the city's water utility can continue to operate without subsidy and allow much-needed operations and maintenance to continue to take place. The important part for tonight is that you're not adopting drought rates to go into effect immediately. What we're asking for is council to adopt them as a tool, so that in the future, you would have the ability to use them if needed. They can only be implemented if two things happen. First, a drought stage is formally declared. And second, council specifically votes to put them in place. Even then, customers will receive at least 30 days' notice in advance. So council maintains full discretion and control over whether these rates are ever used. Essentially, this is a tool in the city council's tool belt to help with future management of the city's water utility. Now we'll move from water to wastewater. Just like with water, wastewater gets a financial plan and rate review every two years. In addition, every six years, we conduct a cost-to-service study that's required to make sure costs are all allocated fairly across customer classes. This year, wastewater was due for its cost-to-service update, and that study drives the rate adjustments we'll review next. The wastewater study produced three key recommendations. The reserve policy was adjusted, lowering the capital reserve target from two years to one year of average annual capital spending. This helps ease rate pressure while maintaining financial safeguards. The financial plan requires 7% revenue adjustments in 2026 and 2027 to keep the system financially stable and fund necessary projects. The updated cost-to-service analysis revised customer factors so bills better reflect actual wastewater flows and strength for each class. As part of the wastewater study, the reserve targets were reviewed. The slides show the reserve target for the wastewater enterprise. The reserves ensure we have adequate resources for operations, capital projects, and emergencies. For fiscal year 2026, the total wastewater reserve target is about $21.9 million. The city's currently adopted Wastewater Capital Improvement Program totals about $85.6 million over the next five years, including carryover from prior years, which is why the first bar is higher than the rest. On average, that's about $12.2 million per year. These investments focus on keeping Hill Canyon Treatment Plant reliable and modern and extending the life of our 415 miles of wastewater pipelines and ensuring long-term system resilience. Projects include pipe and maintenance hole relining, electrical and mechanical upgrades, slope stabilization, and creek habitat restoration. Like water, these projects are funded without new debt. The 7% annual revenue adjustments ensure that the rev, the reserves remain stable while the city's water is being used. while these significant reinvestments move forward. This table shows the proposed wastewater rate cla, rates by customer class. For single-family homes, our largest group with over 36,000 accounts, the fixed monthly charge goes from $39.17 to $42.88 in 2026, about a 9.5% increase. These charges are collected annually on the county property tax roll, totaling about $515 in 2026, an increase of about $44 annually. Multifamily is treated as a commercial property type with multiple dwelling units, such as apartments or townhomes. Because each of those types of housing are smaller and generally have fewer restrooms and generate less wastewater than a single-family residential home. Multifamily homes use approximately 20% less wastewater compared to the single-family residential, which results in a 12.4% decrease in charges. For non-residential, commercial accounts, bills are based on service units, which reflects both plumbing fixture units and wastewater strength, generally increasing about 9.5%. Restaurants with grease traps go down about 8% as they're doing all of the work removing all the fats, oils, and grease, while car washes and industrial accounts increase in the low 20% range as a result of the updated flow assumptions in line with industry standards. Schools increase about 31% due to stronger wastewater concentration and flow, since the previous cost-of-service study had assumed that schools had no wastewater usage after 3:00 PM or on weekends. Due to after-school programs, summer camps, Friday football games, schools have been recalculated to ensure they pay their fair share. For properties outside of city limits, a small surcharge also applies on top of the base charge. This surcharge increases proportionately, so it rises with the same pace as the underlying rates. While the impacts vary, the important point is that weighted across all 38,783 accounts, the overall increase averages about 7%, consistent with the financial plan's recommended rate adjustments. These charges make sure the costs are allocated fairly across all customers in proportion to both flow and strength that they use. Even with the average of $3.71 increase per month to a new monthly rate of $42.88 for a single-family home, Thousand Oaks remains well below the regional average of $68, and significantly less than many others in the county who are shown in this chart. The key point is that even with $85 million in projects ahead and our proactive focus on infrastructure and technology, our rates stay among the most affordable in the region. In summary, both utilities remain financially stable and competitive with the region while aligning charges fairly across customers. The water plan calls for 5% annual revenue adjustments, continuation of the wholesale pass-through, adoption of drought rates under council control, and a reduced capital reserve target to ease rate pressure. For wastewater, the plan calls for 7% annual revenue adjustments and incorporates the 2025 cost-to-service study. That study adjusts customer factors, lowering multifamily and some restaurant charges, while increasing schools and high-flow customers. Like water, the capital reserve target was reduced from two years to one year of capital spending. Since council approved the assistance program in late 2017, we have received positive response for the program. This utility assistance program allows for up to 1,600 residential wastewater and 800 residential water customers. Our utility assistance program provides discounts for income-qualified residential customers who are already enrolled in the CARE program through Southern Cal, California Edison or SoCal Gas. For water, the discount is $10 per month, which works out to roughly 10% for a typical low-use household. For wastewater, the discount is $5 per month, and that's about 11.7% off the standard $42.88 monthly charge. It's important to note that as a public utility, we are limited on how we can fund these types of programs. Ours is supported by penalties and fees collected on delinquent accounts. That means it does not increase rates for all other customers. This approach provides targeted relief for those who qualify while keeping general rates fair and proportional under Prop 218. At this time, we're at 46% capacity for water and 17% for wastewater. We have availability for new enrollees. This is the schedule for moving forward. Tonight is the council workshop. Should council accept these financial plans and the proposed rate adjustments, Prop 218 notices will be mailed out later this week, leading up to a scheduled public hearing for November 4th, 2025. If adopted, the new ra, water rate will take effect on January 1st of each year, while the new wastewater rates will take effect on July of each year. This timing allows for proper noticing and alignment with the city's billing and property tax processes. Staff recommends that council approve the updated water financial plan, approve the wastewater rate study, and set November 4th for the Proposition 218 public hearing on rate adoption. Staff's available if you have any questions.
Ms. Tosato, thank you very much for your report. Are there council questions of staff? Mayor Protem Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I have a question on the drought charge schedule, if we choose to enact it. Is the reason for that based on if we enter a drought, water becomes more expensive, and they basically bring prices up before we come into alignment with our policy, and we run the risk of not being able to cover the charge? Is that the reason for it? Or is the reason for it as a mechanism to try to limit water during a drought?
So the reason for that would be, in times of a drought, we're encouraging our customers to conserve water. And so we have less revenue coming in because they're per, you know, they're using less water, but we still have the same amount of fixed costs. We still have the same staffing costs. We still have the same maintenance costs. So when we have less revenue coming in, but the same amount of fixed costs, we're in a deficit position at that point, because our rates are meant to recover revenue based on a certain water usage. So if that water usage declines, we still have the same fixed costs. Now we're in a deficit position. So the drought surcharge is meant to be enacted, so we can still have enough revenue coming in to cover our costs during periods of drought. Now, we could also, which we have done in the past, just rely on reserves to get us through it. But this just provides the opportunity for council, if they so choose, to enact a surcharge at that point. And we do have some extra costs during droughts. You know, we did water patrols, if you recall, during our last drought, and we had to pay a company to go out and do water patrols and find people.
Yeah, I remember.
So we do have some additional costs that are incurred as well, but it's primarily meant to continue our, our revenue in coming in.
Okay, so during, at least historically, during a drought, considering the last one where we were actively trying to get residents to use less, do you naturally see water usage go down during those times?
Yeah, I think we had about, I think our goal was 50%. We had at least 30% reduction
Okay.
in our water purchases from Cuyahoga. So we did see a significant decline. It has increased somewhat since that last drought, but overall, we've still seen less water usage than prior to that drought.
Okay, and then historically, in those situations, we have relied on reserves to carry us through?
Correct.
Okay.
And if I might add on to that, Councilmember Taylor, the, this tool wasn't afforded to the council the last time. This is a best practice now to have in the toolkit. It doesn't mean that the council will have to utilize it. Whenever there is a drought situation, it's governed by the state, and they put the, the edicts down on the water purveyors, and then that flows through to, to all of us. In, in this case, we would A) have to enact the drought restrictions first, and then secondarily, we would have to make a determination in front of the council here whether you want to enact the drought rates. It's your choice at that point in time. But without this action, without these rates, you simply don't have that tool in your toolbox. And the, the downstream impact, just for like the residents to understand in that is, it, it might seem to run counter, that you would have a situation where we'd have drought rates to go up. It's the impact to the capital. And when you, when that hits, then we have a problem or we'll have a deficit situation that may take shape, depending on how long that drought is in effect.
Okay, so it'll act as an option if, or when we enter into another drought scenario. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Engler.
Yes, thank you, and I do have a question on the drought surcharges. First off, I want to say that the public needs to know that we in Thousand Oaks are taking proactive steps, because we rec, we recognize that we have a city that now is 50-plus years old, aging infrastructure, and the fact that we need to re, retool some of our systems is, are the reason we have such a high capital improvement budget. Without that, we don't have to spend that, but in the end, we're going to spend more because it's going to be a, a crisis. So as far as the drought surcharges, typically in a drought, since we just, we're not too far removed from our last one, I know that our, our experience of that was typical of droughts. We had a, a lot of citizens who voluntarily recognized the issue, cut back on their water, which then reduces revenue to the city. I know that the, there's two sides of that. Some people don't respond and continue to water. How would the drought surcharges affect those folks who decide or can't cut back on their watering?
So as you know, we have tiered rates. So the more water you use, the higher, if you're in tier three, you're paying the highest per unit. So the drought rates are the same. If you're in that tier three and you're choosing not to cut back, you're going to pay an even higher surcharge than somebody who's in tier one.
So it's still related to the water usage by the individual. Are we still, are we still charged by Cuyahoga on a, on a gross amount of service that we get from them? Or do we pass that along to high-water-usage people?
So yeah, we pay per-acre fee purchased of water from Cuyahoga. And part of our rates includes that pass-through component. So I think, I forget what it was for, let me see, the next two years?
About 6%.
About 6% we're passing through from Cuyahoga over to our customers. That's for their rate increases.
I know last time around, we had a lot of, I mean, I received a lot of, of comments from folks that, so I cut back on my water like you asked, and now you're going to charge me more. How do we address those folks?
Yeah, I mean, that's a tough conversation, right? We want everybody to conserve. Again, council has the choice whether they want to implement the surcharge or not. We got through it last drought. We didn't have the ability, but we did get through it last drought with not doing any sort of drought surcharges. But I, I do just want to remind everyone, we have fixed costs. So no matter how mu, we could bring in $0 in revenue because not a single customer purchases, you know, uses any water, and we'd still have millions of dollars in costs that we have. So I understand, you know, wanting to cut back, but we still have a duty to our ratepayers in the future that we're ensuring financial, financial stability, whether we're in a drought or not.
And we're, and this is simply an option that we are putting in our toolbox as the city manager mentioned. It's not something that we're adopting at this moment. Thank you.
And if I might add to that, again, Councilmember Engler, this is really, for, at least how I look at it, is really a question of horizon. You know, thankfully, we got out of the last drought in a relative, we got that rainy year. Had that not happened, you know, you could, we can push through on reserve for a period of time, but at a certain point, it reaches a crisis. A point without rates adopted, then the council is doing, trying to enact something on an emergency basis and going through an entire process, which it really is not going to set you up for success. And so whether the council chooses not to use them at any point, moving them forward in this action puts them in your toolbox or a future council's toolbox to look at.
And I would, I would just add one last point. If we, if, when we get to our next drought, we would be doing analysis on our end as to whether we think we can get through with just using reserves or whether we think council should take action and implement a drought surcharge at that point. And maybe it's not in stage two or stage three. Maybe it's not till it's a more severe case of a drought that we would say, hey, we, we think it's time to pull that trigger, council.
And, and just, just to go back to the resilience point that we made, we've been doing quite a bit of work based on lessons learned out of the Palisades and out of Altadena on hardening our, our systems. And as we have found out on, on numerous occasions, as we approve some of those expenditures, that is not an inexpensive way to go. But we're making those changes for resiliency in our community.
Thank you, Councilmember. Are there other questions of staff?
A few questions. On this, just a high-level question to start. For ratepayers who may experience some sticker shock, as Councilmember Engler was alluding to, we have a policy of cost recovery here, right? We, we base our, what we charge on what the city actually pays to provide services. So the floor is set by that cost-recovery policy on, on the one hand. And then on the other hand, there is a state law, it's been there since 1996, called Prop 218, that says that agencies cannot charge one penny more than it costs to provide a service, correct? So, so is it, is it, isn't it the case then that essentially the floor and the ceiling are one and the same in many cases when it comes to setting service rates?
Right, yeah, so we're, when we are doing our rate study and our financial plans with our consultants, we're looking at how much does it cost us to run, whether it's operations and capital, what are planned capital projects? So we know exactly how much we're going to be spending. And then, for water instance, we know how much acre-feet we think we're going to be purchasing. And so we know how much revenue our target needs to be set at in order to cover those operations and capital. So we're making sure we're setting rates in order to cover our costs.
Yes, so, so, and unlike a private business, which also has to look at margins and say, well, margin can be adjusted up or down, public agencies can't do that because of, well, they can't do that, period.
We don't have any shareholders. We have to...
Right, right, right. So, so the cost to our ratepayers is what it costs us to provide that service.
Correct.
Full stop. I just want to be really clear on that, in case people are saying, where are these numbers coming from? You know, where, where are you getting these crazy numbers? We're not making them up. This is what it actually costs, right?
Correct.
Right, very good. The, there was two charts in your presentation, Ms. Tosato, showing where our city stands in comparison with nearby cities. In, in the wastewater case, good news. Both the current and future numbers are below the average. In the water case, we were above average rate, above the average county rate for 2025, and more so with the proposed increases. But my question is about the, where that average line is. Is, is that average line also a 2025 average?
Yes.
So therefore, the, the overage, if you will, will, will not be as, as extreme once everyone else raises their rates?
Yes, we don't control the rates of other jurisdictions, basically. So we don't, there's no like set standard.
So, so
It's a moment in time.
Once everyone else adjusts their rates for the next year, we'd expect Thousand Oaks to be closer to that 2026 average line, correct?
It's likely.
Okay, good. I don't, I don't know whether it's over or under because we don't know where the others will be, but it's not as much of an overage as it might appear. And speaking of, it's not as much as an overage as it might appear, I got some sticker shock when I was reading the wastewater part of the staff report. And looking, going in percentage terms, looking at different classes of users, and schools, our schools, which are, are good friends and partners, are in the highest percentage term. They're tied for first place at, I think, almost 31% increase. However, you and I just talked about this in our staff meeting. It is a high percentage in percentage terms, but not in absolute terms? Is that?
It's not in dollar terms. So their monthly average bill is only going to change about $100 a month.
Per?
Per count.
Per school or per?
Per account. It's an average of the schools.
Okay, so per, per school.
Correct.
So I think, don't quote me on this, but I think CVUSD has 27 schools. So, and let's, and let's say headquarters as well. So ballpark, it's, it's something like $3,000 all-in? So, ballpark, it's something like $3,000 all in?
I don't know about the specific dollars on the schools. It's per fixture unit, so it depends on how many bathrooms the schools have, and that rate is $7 more per toilet, basically.
Okay. But again, that $100 per unit cost is not, it doesn't look, when you say $100 per, it looks much less significant than, wow, 30%, 31% hike.
Correct. I mean, our monthly average residential is $42.88.
And again, coming back to my first question, this is based on something, right? It's based on a change in the way schools, in the way we're looking at school usage that we previously had assumed five-day-a-week, 8 to 3 usage, and schools, of course, are being used much longer and more extensively than that. That's a good thing, but it does mean there's, there is more demand for wastewater services, so we have to base our service cost on that demand, correct?
That's correct.
Right. Okay, very good. And then, I just want to confirm, and thank you for emphasizing as well that there are subsidy programs available. If there's a hardship, and these rates may be a hardship for some ratepayers, there are utility assistance programs available. And I just want to confirm, you said there is available capacity. So, if the number of ratepayers in need of help increases, there is capacity there. Well, two questions. One, is there capacity there to accommodate additional ratepayers? And two, did I understand correctly from a previous point that these are not paid for with taxes? These are paid for out of delinquency fees and things like that?
Correct. This is paid for by delinquent fees of those delinquent payers. We have limitations on how we can use the funds in the water enterprise, and it's not to subsidize for everybody else.
So, we're not burdening all ratepayers by doing, by providing this assistance where it's needed?
Correct.
Very good. Thank you.
And we do have capacity. We have 54% capacity for water, and then we have a lot of capacity for wastewater.
Right, right. Well, I mean, good to know. I hope we don't need it, but this also goes to the discussion Mr. Engler and Mr. Powers had about horizons. You know, if, well, when the next drought occurs, we don't know how long that will last and how much hardship that may cause, so I'm glad to hear we're thinking about what we do with ratepayers who may need assistance on that. Thank you. That's it for my questions. Are there any other questions of staff? Any public comment? Very good. Well, again, thank you for your report, and with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move that we approve this study or accept the study and look forward to the hearing. I just wanted to point out, and I had the same feeling with the schools, I thought, whoa, that's a pretty good increase. However, the rate that we're charging is still 64% of what a, you know, a 100%, a 24/7 residential would be, and it does still reflect the usage of the schools, just not to the extent that we had before. So, I moderated my thoughts on that. We are still giving the schools somewhat of a break because of their usage.
Yeah, it's an excellent point.
Yes, we need to set the hearing for the 4th of November and also finding number two, which is, this is not an item subject to sue qua.
Thank you very much, Councilmember.
Mr. Mayor, can I add just one quick thing?
Councilmember Adam.
Thank you. You know, whenever I think about water, I think about how we're doing it conservation-wise, and I checked with our Public Works Director, Mr. Hidari. Before the drought, we were using 11,000 acre feet per year in the city. Post-drought, we're down to around 8,000 or 9,000. That's pretty good, 25% decrease. So, the water-saving techniques that the city's using and the general public are using are working, so that's a good thing. And, I mean, this water network of ours is huge, Hill Canyon, miles and miles of pipelines, 16 reservoirs, and like Bob says, we've got to maintain it. Some of these capital improvement projects do just that. Metering of water through your phones, which is a pretty cool idea. Oh, generators at the reservoirs to keep them pumping if we have a power outage, that's important. Site hardening in the event of wildfires. So, yeah, these are really essential services and a very legitimate use of taxpayer funds.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the two points I want to emphasize in what you just said about this whole question around resiliency, that we're buying these generators, and these are not the $500 jobbies you buy at a hardware store.
These are the real deal.
I, if my accounting is correct, which is always a questionable proposition, but if my math is right, I think we are somewhere north of $10 million and counting in terms of our hardening of our water infrastructures just this year alone. I see Mr. Hidari nodding his head, so I got my numbers to add up correctly for once. And it's those generators, which are very large and very expensive, as well, it is fire hardening the structures that they're in. So, when, not if, the next wildfire happens or there's some other emergency, the water pumps will continue to work no matter what, and that's a really important point. And then, Councilmember Adam, I'm really glad you mentioned the advances in metering that are going on, where ratepayers will have an app on their phones, so if they have a water main leak, they won't get a $2 water bill. They'll know right away because their app will say, hey, something is way out of normal in your usage, and that's a great improvement for ratepayers as well. So, couldn't agree more in terms of, we're getting smarter and better on conservation measures. Any other comments before we vote? Very good. Will the clerk please prepare us for a vote?
And that motion passes 5 to 0.
Very good. Thank you to everyone in finance and Public Works and the whole team for putting together this biennial study. We move now to comments from our city manager, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Mayor Newman. Our next regular city council meeting, it will be the 23rd of September, two weeks from tonight. You'll have a special presentation recognizing New West Symphony's 30th anniversary, Business Recognition Program Award. We'll have another public hearing, this one on triannual public health goals related to water quality, the Water Quality Report, and a department report, the TOR's Annual Report. And interestingly, I was just taking a look to, you know, put an exclamation point on the discussion this evening of the 11 consent calendar items, seven of them are water, wastewater for that particular evening. So, it gives you a flavor of the amount of work that's going in that space. That's the 23rd of September, and Mrs. Ingrid Hardy will be covering for me that night, so she'll be on the dais with you that evening as I have a conflict.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Powers. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting to our next regular meeting on September 23. Good night, Thousand Oaks.